It's five thirty-one and we are going to start. Right. Um, first thing, do we have any public comments? I can't quite see the screens, so. So, um, we have, this is time for public comments to our new public coming in. Anybody on screen? No, right. Um.
Bottom right, it's the last name. The last name, sorry.
Danny, thank you.
Sorry. Name that you mind.
Thank you.
Um, treasures report and approval of the expenditures. The finance committee reviewed. The. The income statement and various reports that review the bills and approve the bills. Thirty-eight thousand dollars or thirty-nine thousand five hundred fifty-two dollars and seventy-eight cents. I think that. That the board of people.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
I, alright.
Um, consent agenda, we have approval of the minutes of the meeting held August thirteenth. There is no admin committee report. There is a search committee update. There is a building committee report. An outreach committee report, an upper Hudson library system report, and no president's report this month.
There is an upper Hudson report though.
Yes, there is. It's online. It's, hey, it's two pages I had to make sure with this Miller phone.
Oh, two whole pages.
Two whole pages, well, it just went over the first, couldn't have that, one page. Even if I have to cheat anyways. There's peace in there, okay, um. I make the motion that we. Pass the consent agenda.
Second motion.
Any discussion? Okay, all in favor?
I, I.
And we're already up to our regular agenda, we're flying tonight. Um, directors report, you're right.
Yeah, we're starting. All of a sudden, I was like, oh yeah, you need this. Uh, so. Um, this kind of kind of goes through things quickly, I know we have a big night. Um, there's the great give back program through upper, well, not through upper Hudson, but um. The state of New York has this program to the, for nonprofits to um, collect materials and then give back to the community because we spend a lot of time, you know, asking the community for stuff. So ultimately, I think a couple of years ago, Upper Hudson decided to work with all the uh, libraries and the system to work together as opposed to individual libraries. And so uh, this year they're uh, they've discussed to focus on hygiene products as opposed to food products. And so the um, department heads and I met earlier today, we think it would be a great idea, so we're going to collect uh, materials. And if we happen to get a lot of feminine products, then we're going to look at um, making the donation to the Y W C A. So just a thing that's uh, part of um, what we do. Um, it's in October, I believe, it's not all the month, but it's pretty much the month. And so um, there's a whole campaign with logos and it was branded a specific way, so we'll just make sure to get the information out. I think there might have been one time that it didn't go so well, but that might have been that we didn't promote it as well as we could have. So uh, we're still going to do the food pantry, that'll be a separate, and we just didn't want to just add more food to the food pantry, we thought we'd do something a little bit different.
So every member library got to check the. Um, recipient of. Um, if it's going to all the different.
I actually know, uh, the last time I did this, it was just take photos of the stuff and calculate it so that Upper Hudson can say, as an organization, we collected, you know, the two hundred items or whatever. Um, I don't recall that they came to pick it up. I believe um, we just had somebody uh, who came by and then distributed to local churches for their.
Yeah, so everyone's getting their own local.
Yeah, it's just a question of participating, I think you have a little bit of flexibility.
That's a very cool program, thank you for exploring us being a part of that.
Um, library building, um, an update on uh, the Lansingburg branch. Um, I sent out the other day uh, both of the ADA compliance documentation that Lori had received. Um, at this point, they are starting to ask about payments. Um, and I know that Freda is just waiting for our decision on whether to move ahead on that. And uh, we have had a few little issues, some of the screws came out, there was a section that was not level, so it almost could have been a tripping hazards. We had put some bright tape on that temporarily, so they've come and they've taken care of that and everything else. So as far as I know, all of that is in place. Uh, we do have a gentleman that's going to be coming here on Friday. Who's going to be, uh, we're going to have as a handy person to kind of go around. So one of the things we were going to ask is, you know, is it possible to turn the door around? What's the physics of the door bumping up against the railing? Because it's awkward for the door, the way that it opens with the direction of the ramp and stuff. Um, obviously we won't make any decisions, but it was just one of those things that people asked, can we just, you know, flip the door so that it opens right to left instead of left to right?
Christian, do you have some, something you want to say?
I. Would really like to meet with the uh, Northeast Mobility on site. Be able to. Point out specific things and make sure that they are, that they believe that it meets ADA. I have serious reservations about whether it does. And uh. I would recommend that before we pay them in full, uh, that um. We have a chance to have them, I, I don't, I don't believe it meets ADA, so.
Yeah.
I. Certainly. Want them to commit one thousand percent on that. Um, if a partial payment may be appropriate, but I would recommend against payment in full.
Just for, just from my own understanding, is there like a specific part of the law that you believe? I remember there was some discussion around the eighteen inch clearance and stuff like that, I don't know.
Eighteen inch clearance on the full side of the door that is uh, not present.
Okay, and there's no, sorry, I'm just unfamiliar with like the literal textual definition of it, there is, there's no, are there any clauses that outline modifications to old buildings or anything? I mean, I'm, this is just for my curiosity.
It's, well, first off, it's not law, uh, so that's what I'm trying to say to the person. But uh, there, uh, no, you can, certainly their modifications are allowed, this, you can, but eighteen inches is very clearly spelled out, does the door have a closer on it?
I think so.
I think so. If, if it's not a law, then is it a regulation? Is it something that's someplace that you're looking to say it's not?
I would just say compliance with the ADA and leave it at that. I'll let a lawyer parse whether it's a regulation or a stipulation or a whatever it is. Eighteen inches is part of that ADA requirement.
So even with the city's notification that it does meet ADA compliance for them.
Doesn't present a preventus meeting soon, and that's lawyers.
Okay.
And. The person who did the inspection for the city was the fire department, I believe?
Um.
I thought it was Conan Corson.
The name is Conan Corson.
Be happy to meet with him out there and have a review with him as well.
Okay.
We have the report that I sent to all of you from the ambience, um, don't ask me to interpret it, it's outside of my um, purview. But I did uh, speak with um, gentleman by the name of C D yesterday, uh, before he was able to submit a report. So um, basically, the Troy room is good to go. Um, it had, you know, there is asbestos in the.
With molding, to crown molding?
Sorry. Well, that's whatever, you know, plaster, thank you, that's the word I'm looking for. Um, so from their vantage point, it was minimal, there was nothing in the air at all. So um, our uh, cleaning guy Derek is going to be coming in either Wednesday or Saturday to do a deep clean. So depending on which day, we'll open the doors and uh, get everyone uh, ready to participate in the Troy room and all that it offers. Um, and we're, we've been collecting a list of folks, so that way we can call them. The room is now available. Uh, in terms of the art gallery, however, because there is still debris in, in the area, they do recommend um, having us use an abatement specialist to come in and um, clean that up. And then afterwards, come in and check the air again, make sure that everything's okay. So um, they have provided us with a couple of names, I haven't had any chance to look at anything. Uh, they just had a picture with, which was some of our images or layouts, floor plans, what have you. Uh, and then they just did a little red square saying, and I think it's like ten. Meters or ten. Not inches, but anyway, uh, so a scale, um, just a small area, but, so I don't really know how much that's going to cost or anything, but I will get that to you soon.
Thank you so much for navigating that.
Uh, HVAC design uh, is complete, uh, Shippo has provided us with the go-ahead, as I mentioned. Uh, we now have dates, so the bid date is going to be Tuesday, September twenty-fourth. Uh, the walk through, which is the third, the bid opening is going to be October twenty-second. And uh, we don't actually know, the contractor has to decide on the dates for. At one point in the conversation, they were estimating uh, January, you know, just after January, so unless there's any conversation. Uh, one of the things that did come up from uh, TAP was they sent me some information about a technical assistance grant. Um, from the preservation made of New York State, it's five thousand dollars. Um, they're recommending that we go for the grant so that we can get an assess, like a full assessment of the outside of the building. I just haven't had a chance to go online and check assessments that we've done before, whether uh, we had a full building, whether it was interior or exterior or both. So I'm going to go and check that because we have something that's fairly recent, we obviously don't need another one.
Isn't that the, um, doesn't the historic structure report kind of comprehensively look at all of that? I mean, last time I read it, I thought it does.
But I haven't read it at all, I just haven't had a chance to. At it, so um, so if it doesn't, and we want to go with this. Uh, because of the nature of when the deadline is, the fact that I'm working at the library construction grant, um, TAP didn't offer that, you know, billable hours, that they can go ahead and pull it together. Because you do need to work for the preservation specialist, T R W being one of them, things like that.
That might be useful at the Lansingburg, now that I think of it, so.
Yes. So. Anyway, so I just wanted to, you know, get an idea of whether you guys wanted to go ahead if we've never had one before or change it for Lansingburg instead of uh, the main building and then be able to.
Did we get a preservation grant, though, and we did the um, H S R?
Yes.
Yeah, they were like seven thousand.
No, it was like fifteen or twenty.
So that's what I'm wondering, five thousand, sounds modest. Um, and I'm not sure it'll.
Maybe leftovers with seven thousand.
Be enough to provide. Good, so substantially advance that, is this a. Grant that says, oh yes, you can buy something for five thousand dollars, or is it a grant toward?
It's toward, uh, it, it can't do uh, design work or, you know, uh, architectural work and things like that. It was, I think um, that when Lisa and I were outside, we were looking at the building and all the cracks on the right-hand side, not knowing, is the building still moving? Is it settled? And so she said that there was somebody by the name of Biggs or Riggs or.
Brian Biggs.
Yes, so that, you know, and, you know, could they do some analysis? That might be what she's talking about, and that might be.
The question is, is the five thousand dollars what Ryan Biggs would charge to do the work, or is this a grant toward getting them to do the work?
Uh, it's a grant toward.
Okay, as Ryan Biggs did an assessment for us at school eighteen that was. Well, in excess of five thousand dollars.
Yes.
So.
My days, not in expected.
They're nice, they're very good, I want to make sure they're, they're very good.
They can, they can also.
They've already given us a grant. For the historic structure report. They, they're two different brands, um. Which, we got the other one previously toward the historic structure report. And I don't remember exactly which one is, what each does and what each one is for.
The other piece to consider is, and do we, if we were to do, this building is a particular part of the building that we could. Spend the five thousand dollars on, if it's really just a part, so. I certainly think if there's a grant available, uh, worth pursuing, uh, we should then be thoughtful about how we apply that grant. Whether it's. A little bit specific area that areas of concern, or whether it's to, wait.
That's so, so.
October eleventh.
Yeah, so again, the question on the table, other than looking into pursuing it, is do any of you want to take that on? Or should we look at the big tap, do the grants, if we just need to move forward, that's.
Yeah. That's a question. It's a special teams project to go.
Let me tap, express their willingness?
They will bill us, it's billable hours.
Gotcha, that makes sense.
I don't know what their billable hours are.
So yes, you know.
Are you, do you know how much they charge per hour approximately?
For this?
I don't, they, they are, I cheated, see if he has.
Can you see that, well, you don't know. No, they said it's a fairly simple one, and that doesn't mean anything, uh, whatever, but I just haven't had the time to really look into it. I just wanted to, you know, see if this was a direction you wanted to go in, and if so, we, who might be interested in them, you know, I can look into it in a month and six days and then find out if it's really.
You can always kick it to the building committee, too.
Yeah, sure.
I just know that by the time we meet the next time.
Yeah.
It's too late to put the grant in play.
Right.
The committee needs that.
If it's something that they can do in time for. So.
We might be better off, oh, pay, if we have, can find the money, paying the billable hours simply because we got a lot on our plate now with director search, and we're running out of time in our days.
And I was heading in the same direction with that as well.
I can certainly get.
Suggest was.
Them or something like that, and.
Uh, if we could, is there a percentage that we'd be willing to pay them? Would we pay them five thousand dollars to pursue a five thousand dollar grant? No, would we pay five hundred dollars to do a five thousand dollar grant? So what's the percentage that we would uh, entertain?
Well, and if the grant isn't sufficient in its own right. Are we paying them for something we wouldn't, well, have the money?
Right.
Or, or is there really, is there an isolated area that, where I'd like to look at this corner? I know Lisa was looking at the cornice over there from the inside, she was wondering about the cornice, what's it look like on the outside? So maybe she's thinking, let's look at that part of the cornice.
Right.
Um, maybe, I, I, so.
Right, so getting more.
The recommendation, you know, where would the five thousand dollars be focused on? Um, and what's their rate to do that grant? I, I agree, we did the meeting a lot, a lot of other things and stay focused on these other things.
And would we consider, since we've already had a grant from the preservation. For this building.
Okay.
I can. You know. Or if we would consider the Lansingburg, would we be eligible, would they consider us, since we have been supported by them in the past?
Okay.
Thank you for bringing that up.
Yeah.
So um. Building grant information is pretty much the same, just with some, you know, minor updates and stuff. Um, wanted to officially inform you that Virginia Westcott has stepped down as the safety committee chair. I will be chairing that uh, going forward. We don't have a meeting set up just yet, but um, that is going to be forthcoming. Um, I know that you guys wanted to know about incidents. Um, we had a couple of incidents uh, since the last meeting, uh, we did have someone overdosing in our bathroom.
Oh.
And then um, there was another uh, staff patron who verbally threatened staff and apparently assaulted two patrons. So we didn't catch the first assault until we looked at the cameras and then uh, as they were leaving the building. Salted someone.
Um, did anyone on the staff have to Narcan, whoever?
They, uh, so there was a little bit of a misunderstanding when it was all happening, they were getting the Narcan ready, and I was informed that they had, when I met with the, the paramedics. I informed them that, but it turned out they didn't because, because we were on walkie-talkie. So once I said, the paramedics are here, then they just sort of stopped, so it was a bit of a discommunication, but yeah. Uh, the patron did come back later in the day looking for their purse, which we didn't have, because it went with them, um, and left in a huff and were very frustrated that we called the police in the first place, I think, so. But they're alive and well, and that's the.
Um, and for the, just for the um, patron assaulting people, the cops come, did they leave before the cops come?
Yeah, those situations, obviously, uh, they did leave just before the cops came, uh, because of the nature of the threat. Uh, we did lock the front door uh, for a bit of time because we weren't sure if they were going to come back. And uh, we gave a description to the police officers, um, and then um, we haven't heard anything since, so.
How was your interaction with them, the police?
Uh, I wasn't here that day, so I had no interaction whatsoever. Uh, it seemed that they were much more attentive than they had been.
Okay.
Um, and took it seriously, so that was.
Yeah, I appreciate hearing that, at the very least, um, who was, who was dealing with that, and since you were off that day, just for curiosity?
Yeah, so Virginia um, had uh, let me know that the situation had occurred, came in, so sort of like, right at the end of it, um, and she can speak more to it if you want to get more specific.
I just wanted to understand the people in play, that's all.
I believe Frank was involved as well, and I think it was a.
Gotcha.
You know, so one of the situations was also um, in an exchange with Anne, like putting a fist back or a hand or something, and she stood up and, you know. We're, don't think that she was hit, at least that's what she said, so it was just, it was very physical.
Well, glad everyone's okay at the end of it, and I am sorry that, to hear that, that happened.
There was a follow-up. Yes, there was follow-up, I had meant to come in, but had a situation at home that I just wasn't able to get here, but uh, but yeah, there has been some follow-up. Okay, so we uh, we do have an incident report that we do, and then we have a follow-up on what we could have done better and things like that, so.
Tried with that before, so.
Yeah. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, um, there, you know, with the OD situation, same thing, we uh, didn't make sure that the people that were directly involved took a break for as long as they needed, things like that. So they seemed okay, sometimes, you know, you think you're okay and you might not be okay, but.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you, Christine.
Um. On a lighter note, um, summer reading statistics, I've only gotten the statistics for the adult programming at this time, only because uh, Carol hasn't announced it for a few days. So uh, that information is in here, I'm not going to go through it everything with you, but uh, very popular, you know, um, people are really excited on the adult framework, um, but also kids and stuff participating. And then uh, the rest of the material is just um, items that go along with the overall director's report. I didn't do the statistics this time, uh, I didn't have as much time to look them over and get everything together, but because it's cumulative through the month, I'll make sure that at the next meeting, we have those details together. But obviously, they're going to major uptick in programming and things like that. Any questions, comments, concerns?
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
There's a lot of material.
Ten square feet.
Ten square feet.
I just got to it. Sorry, like ten square meters. I'm just going to drop that right here. Not actually.
I, I, I'm a person that I can look at stuff and say, oh yeah, that's going to fit, but yards, like, you know, I just, I can't do that.
I'm a metric guy, that works, so I get that, yeah.
So already up to all the new business. Um, some of the new business, do you want to start out, because we need to talk about the main roof. By roof authorization.
As part of the uh, building committee uh, report, we had talked about uh, bids for the replacement of the roof here at the main library. Uh, bid's coming over. Uh, budget, and we talked about ways to look at the. Special cost savings, the low bidder came back with some cost savings strategies. Uh, as a committee, we talked about the uh, pros and cons of two options. Uh, one which would provide a twenty-year warranty roof on the building, in, over the entire building. And one which would provide an unwarranted roof, which with an expected lifespan of approximately five years for the entire building. The second option with the shorter lifespan uh, would fit in within the, exactly at the budget that we have allocated for the project. The uh, twenty-year roof would be uh, approximately. Seventy thousand dollars more. Uh, and uh, as a committee, we. Came to conclusion that uh. If we can come up with the additional funds, it'd be highly desirable to uh, go with the longer-term solution. Uh, we've talked about where funds might be allocated from. From potential options and an option that would be uh. A definite, if the other options weren't possible. We, as a committee, then came up with a recommendation for the board, which was voted on, accepted unanimously. Uh, I'll read that recommendation. Uh, the building committee recommends the Troy Public Library Board of Trustees, that's a temporary acting director or director. And that, I think it's been changed to interim director or director, be authorized to contract with Titan Roofing to provide an E P D M roof system and all related work as described in the plans and specifications prepared by TAP. Dated June twentieth, twenty twenty-four, and modified by Titan's proposal dated August twenty-six, twenty twenty-four.
Uh. The second motion?
Thank you.
Any discussion?
Um, I have something, so I wanted to look at what the cost was involved in this. And I wanted to point out to people that it's not just the extra eighty thousand. Um, that we talked about taking from the bequest, but also it's the ten percent. Of the project that it's match, and in addition, we talked about how much the soft costs would be. So when I looked at this. We were talking about a hundred fifty-six thousand, six hundred dollars in terms of our cost, that we would need to be able to provide that amount of money in conjunction with this project. So I just wanted to make sure that people were aware of this, and whether people had thoughts on where this money was going to come from.
And I apologize for, I, I don't recall where you got that exact number from. Um, that you just quoted as dollars.
So eighty thousand was the addition beyond what the grant provided.
Right.
Uh, ten, then we have a ten percent match, at least for now, so.
That would not be in addition to that, though, right? We had, we, we owed the ten percent anyway, right, so that's not in addition to the seventy thousand.
Well, it is something we'll have to come up with.
Yes, yeah.
So.
And we've always had that ten percent that we've had to come up with, right?
Right.
Yeah.
But. It's still an issue of where we're going to get that money.
Sure, agreed.
Um, and then, so the match would be. Would be nineteen thousand eight hundred dollars, then the soft costs, which we talked about.
That should be.
Nineteen thousand.
Oh, yes, yes.
The soft costs, we talked about being twenty percent.
Might be twenty percent, and I should could offer some more insights into that. The twenty percent number that we've talked about in the past is an estimating number that's used at the beginning of projects when many costs are unknown. So when we're doing initial budgeting on projects, I've recommended in the past, carrying twenty percent for soft costs as a budget number early on. Now that we're further into this project, in the life of the project, we're, by contract, approximately eighty percent of the way through the project. So we have a much better sense of what those soft costs are. I was able to reach out to uh, TAP, and they've given us a estimate what they, what they spent so far, and what they anticipate spending. For their cost through destruction observation. Uh, they estimate that they've spent uh, five thousand five hundred eighty-five dollars to date, and that they project that they will have another twelve to twenty, two, twelve hundred to two thousand. to twelve hundred to two thousand dollars. Using these wrong numbers here, so I apologize. The cost for TAP in total would be estimated to be around eight thousand dollars. There may also be some additional costs from Ambient to do their testing. They've done some testing recently, or others have done testing. Lisa didn't have a number for that. But I believe it'll be around two thousand dollars. Is that consistent with other testing that work that we've had done?
I don't know.
But that was approximately what we paid for the short room and that, yeah.
Well, so far.
I don't, I don't want to speak for you. I just looked at it tonight, so.
No, that's fine. I know that there were documents that were sent out about testing, but I don't look at the amounts, so, yeah, that seems.
So I, I think if.
Two to three grand, probably.
Yeah, so I, I figure that we figure ten thousand dollars for additional costs above and beyond the contract values that are spelled out here, so. That's
And pardon, pardon my ignorance with like project planning, that, that doesn't include any sort of wiggle room for any change requests?
Right.
Okay, thank you.
If I want to carry something for that, just in case, be prepared that there could be they open up something and find that it's more than what they thought, but.
Well, as part of that discussion too, is if this influences anyone's vote on this, we talked about the fact that this was a necessity, and it needed to be done now, not later. And that we also talked at great length about using the money in the investment treasury bills to pay for this. And there was a consensus that that's where we would find the money. And in fact, jumping ahead, that is the second, the corollary motion, I'll come right after, we agreed to authorize it went entering into the contract with Titan.
I'm not disagreeing with that.
Okay.
I'm just trying to make people aware that when we look at the projects, that their costs are greater than perhaps we're thinking, because in all honesty, another, another source of funds for this could well be the foundation.
Not like this, no.
I, I, why do you say that?
I thought the foundation gave us literally all of their, excuse me for missing the terminology. Whatever, whatever they can literally give us in cash, I thought that already happened.
That was for last year, not for this year. That was for last year. But the most that they're ever going to do is, is say, between, the most, what was it, thirty? What did I write down in that list? It's in there. I could type it up and send it again, and it dissipates. But that was, that was pushing it. That was considering they didn't pay any of their own expenses and had members of the foundation agree to help their own group out in paying their expenses. We're not going to get something like that shortfall for the foundation.
I'm not saying that we will. I'm saying that when we look at all, all that we have to pay toward this. One source of potential, oh, is the foundation, that would then lessen it, but.
Are you, sorry, are you talking just in any amounts? Like, you're not, you're not assuming that the foundation will cover any substantial cost of our overage of our match, but just like they might give us anything? Are you saying that this is a potential source of funding?
Not only, because as Evelyn says, they typically contribute twenty-five to thirty thousand, but still, that's, that would be a help.
I don't disagree.
It's always a help, because we have other projects that eventually we'll find they'll be supporting something, and they'll only be, you know, there, there are rationales, they only work on capital projects and only work on our match. So even then, if we're doing that, that's nineteen K, they might not go up higher. Literally, when they gave us the thirty, it was because our match was going to be so much higher. We only have match of nineteen, because this is coming out of our funds. So that's one. Two, there's other sources. Let's just say by some miracle, we end up getting the insurance money for Lansingburg. But we've also already come up with other grant money and are using that. You never know. There's nothing that says we can't use some of that insurance money for other capital projects. There's always other sources, but right now, we need to know that we can fund this project and fund it now. But I don't mean we're taking everything out of, in fact, I think, I'm hoping the wording of the authorization for using that money is covers all this. If not, I'm sure people will comment, but we have to know that we can do this before we go and say it, you know, sign on with Titan, and I think we made that agreement that we were going to use that money. I don't, I was hesitant about that, but we need to do it.
And I voted for it.
Oh, I know.
I'm just trying to people, make people aware that there are other costs here. Now, you mentioned the Lansingburg money. We still have no way to pay for any of that. We have no idea. So that's also something outstanding that we may have to come up with once.
We have so many other outstanding projects, it's, it's that's an understatement of the year, I think I just made. The thing is, we know we have this, we need to do this. And I don't think anyone here is that unaware that there's extra costs, that it's not just a little bit of money. I think when we were looking at that whole the amount of treasury bills, we knew we were going to take a large chunk of it, and I would like.
Said a hundred and sixty grand, that's like twenty grand less than I assume, so.
Yeah, I think we are quite aware.
Primarily our investment account, like we discussed at the building committee.
Okay, I, I saw us only talking about eighty thousand.
No, I don't think so. I think they're looking at a lot more.
I'm still not quite sure how we get up to a hundred and sixty, I.
Well, that was using the twenty percent.
Okay.
That we had talked about.
It should be.
And I, I agree. I think it was an overage. And I think also, we're, we're not having to worry about increasing costs, because one of the reasons we want to go ahead with this is because of the fact that we want to get this price to do it.
Okay.
So we don't have to worry about, about the price going up.
So I'm going to ask this now, because do we have any other issues, any other discussion, any other points? Is there's a motion on the floor? On the table? Okay.
Just the things you didn't miss.
I could be a little bit more exact if we definitely speak. So we have a motion, and we've done discussion. No one else has anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, part two, though, dealing with, I had it here too.
I've made a few remarks there.
Okay, let's see what you've come up with. Okay, the total, and the granted. So you're just taking the actual cost of the total project costs?
No, 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 it's just for the overage. Just the overage.
All right, I'm going to try and figure out how your words fit into this. Each of you has a copy. In order to properly and fully complete the roof, I'm going to make the motion about funding this project. In order to properly and fully complete the roof replacement project at the main library, and in order to cover the shortfall between a construction fund award granted and the, not the twenty twenty-four? And the total twenty twenty-four total project cost estimate, is that how you want it worth?
It's total.
Total project costs.
Total project cost.
Okay. And you don't want to take out of how cost, all right. The Troy Public Library Board of Trustees authorizes the library director, including interim director, to expend monies from the investment treasury bills. This authorization is for this project only, and withdrawals should be made in the most efficient and least costly method possible. Understanding that the investment account is necessary for future needs, the board also mandates that the account be refunded on an ongoing basis as monies become available. Do I have a second?
Second, everybody.
Discussion.
Yeah, you could that one.
I could write that one.
Um. All right, I thought I had a point of discussion, but it slipped away. Someone else have something else they want to say?
Yeah, I'm, I don't know that we can refund it by tax dollars.
So I don't, I legally don't think we can.
So I just wanted to mention that.
Great, that is not including tax dollars.
Well, no, you don't have to, you don't need to modify it.
Okay.
It's for people.
Being aware?
Yes.
Any other points of discussion? Is it come back? Your thought?
Oh, no, I think that was mostly it.
Oh, okay.
Legally, we can't collect tax or anything when manifested, because that's, that's corruption.
Not corruption, they don't like to see.
I think it's, I think it's the very least fraudulent.
They don't like, you know, the state control is all.
They don't want to do any of that.
Yeah.
Don't like to see tax money accruing.
It's being used.
The intent is to spend it. So is there a maximum amount or anything that we're?
I, well, the maximum amount is the total project costs, the shortfall, right? That's how I interpreted that.
It depends how much over the grants that we end up expending, which we can't put, I couldn't put an amount in there, is we don't know.
And I'll say you can't exceed the value of the keynotes.
Yeah.
So.
Right.
That's.
It's bracketed.
Luckily, I think we're still under that.
Yeah, yes, yes. Discussion.
Okay, yeah, but hopefully if there is, it's going to be a
Right, and we want to be as small as possible, we do.
So, we've had the motion, we have the second, we've had discussion, maybe, okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Well, got another thing on your list to do, to-do list.
I'm so sorry, Christine.
We thank, we thank you.
We just can't stop doing this. All right, so that's one new business. One other piece of new business, before I ask anybody else, because I just want to get it off my head before I forget. Sometimes between September twenty-fourth and October eighth, which is the next board meeting, which will be the organizational board meeting, there's going to be a need for the ad hoc nomination committee. At this point, I think it's kind of, it is not appropriate, shall we say, to name a committee or set the date, because we don't actually know who's going to be on this board, that's September twenty-fifth. So just so everyone's aware, that there might be a very quick, short timeframe, and people are, can think about how, if they want to be on the committee. By the way, when it comes for nominations, anyone, nominations that could be taken from the floor too, but it's always nice to have a slate presented to give something to start with.
Do you want me to just in-name chair this committee, so I can organize that, and we don't have to wonder?
That would be fun.
Two and a half weeks.
I still have, right now, I still have the power to name, name a chair of committee, so you've got it.
Thank you for volunteering.
Got it. Want to make sure we don't miss anything.
You're much more polite than I am, because I don't say anything. Thank you, thank you.
That's fine.
All right, so.
I'm very happy for it.
I'll cut that out before I forgot about it. Um, any other old or new business?
I was supposed to check into the the use of endangering public safety. Option to, for executive session.
What did you turn up?
That the emphasis is really on disclosure of the information.
Okay.
So it's intended not to give potential lawbreakers an advantage. There were three examples. One was location of a domestic violence shelter. Another was talking about the staffing in the police or sheriff's office. And the third was disaster preparedness. And so the lawyer that I said to said it was, he thought it's very unlikely that it would be something that would be used by the library, that they would have rationale.
Was this a COG attorney?
Committee on Open Government? Yes. Any other questions?
Well, there would be situations where Barry would use it, for instance, camera placement, second. He wouldn't reveal that openly.
Yeah, it would be rare, but yeah.
Yeah.
And there were, there were others that I can think of. They had somebody undercover here for a reason, you know, you wouldn't want to disclose that. But they, it's not that the matter itself is endangering public safety, it's that disclosing the information endangers public safety.
Thank you, Mary. Um, any other old or new business?
Um, I, I don't know if you're aware of that, at one point, we were looking to get in the Dolly Parton, being part of the Dolly Parton Imagination Library. And then the United Way got the funding to, to go forward with that, and we've been working with them, and they would launch the Redwood County portion of the Dolly Parton Imagination Library here at the library, October of eleven or ten, ten, ten. So that's going to be, we will be supporting the efforts to get people signed up, so it's for anybody zero to five.
Um, I know that the calendar had two dates, a Thursday and a Friday set aside for the reading room.
The, the, the launch is on the Thursday.
On the Thursday, okay. Um, I think that's one of our.
I know.
We were forward, that's all, but I don't think there's going to be any.
No.
What time, what time exactly, just in case, so.
Right after storytime, so storytime's at ten thirty, so they're planning about. And I believe there, I'm watching something, it's going to be out here.
It's in the reading room.
Yes.
Right.
Yes.
Right, so they said we could still have the art gallery, we just had to be aware that there might be noise. I don't know what the, so eleven to what time?
It takes them for them to cite a lot of different, you know.
Okay, and long.
Get all those story time too.
All right. Just as we've worked out our other timetable, it's like, how's this all going to fit? I've been wondering, and no one had quite the answer, so thank you. And congratulations.
Yeah, it's brilliant.
All right, um, any other new or old business?
I had one thing I wanted to bring up, and I'm bringing up here rather than finance, is that a couple of our members expressed that they know they they didn't understand the categories that are used in what goes into the monthly income statement, and that concerned me.
Members of the board?
Members of the board, you were one.
Oh, yes, I was.
And Kristen was another, so that's why I said I'm doing it here rather than finance, because.
Yeah. Oh.
So that.
I clarified my own thing, I watched the train. Very good, very, very good. Oh, so, so thank you for your concern. Most recording.
Yeah.
Yeah, info sessions.
Perhaps you and I can, since Alex no longer has that concern, you and I can, um discuss those and see whether we can remedy it.
Happy to, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, any other new or old business?
That's making my job very, very easy tonight.
Oh, yeah, I cannot believe this.
Like shocking.
I know, there's, September's meetings always go really fast. Yeah, because we don't, we keep a agenda overload, and we do all our work beforehand, so all these other months that we've been spending so much time, that's why. Um, is there any community feedback?
Yes, actually, um, I heard nothing but positive things, I wish, I know Christiana, I think is dealing with something, so so the library, I heard a lot of positive feedback about the adults of our reading program.
Anything else? Okay. Um, public comment? Okay, we are.
Uh, the documentation for the Canadian branch. How the red recognition for that, would that?
We'll pass that on. And thank you.
So recommendation not part of the um, the uh, board committee being notes and where they included the court packet that the public had asked for. Uh, they're not.
It's a deck.
Um, if, if you're talking specifically about the quotes or quotes we received and any sort of schematics, those are.
What documentation are you looking for?
The recommendation. So.
Recommendation for the move. You're looking for the proposed motion?
Um. About the.
You have to look at the building committee notes.
Yeah.
Yes.
I, I believe in.
Oh, nice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other public comment? Is there?
Anybody on the lines?
Can call in, please. All right.
I've doubled my count and it's.
Um, then it's date of next meeting, October eighth, twenty twenty four, five o'clock for finance, five thirty for regular meeting. Just square. So any other last minute things anyone forgotten about? In that case, I make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
None. I could have come up with more.
What?
I could have come up with more.
In fact, I've been completing it on October eighth. Eight, it is a second because it's the second.
Second.
First is. Really erotic.
And sometimes it seems like it goes forever. And sometimes we just close our eyes and hear it again.
And then um, we meet the candidates.
Yes.
Oh. Tonight?
Tonight.
At seven, in the seventeenth, at, at Lansingburg next Tuesday.
I have tonight.
Seven, seven AM over there.
Did we stop recording?
Uh, trusting you.
Um, I don't think we have, you know, we do.
All right, I have been entitled. I'm gonna go get some fresh air.
I will join you.
Oh.
Hey, folks, can we get laptop shut down? We can.